Traditional ancestral contemporary and unceded territory of the Dakota people. From Bidode, a confluence of the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers, a place the Dakota people poetically claim as the center of the earth directly beneath the center of heaven. To Indian Mounds Park, a sacred place of burial built by ancestors of living people and home to the only known remaining burial mounds within the Minneapolis-Simpson urban core. Indigenous people have cared for this land. Through warfare, genocide, relocation, and removal penetrated by colonizers, the state of Minnesota and the federal government injustices that reduced over one hundred and fifty million indigenous people to around three hundred thousand. Indigenous people have given their blood, tears, heart, resilience, and love to this land. And during boarding schools that were in operation from eighteen seventy-nine through the nineteen thirties, where assimilation through humiliation was the curriculum, and unspeakable atrocities occurred daily, to the foster care system where more kids were removed from indigenous homes than any other group in Minnesota, indigenous people have not lost their culture or identity and still reside on this land. Roseville area schools is committed to ensuring the culture of our indigenous relatives, the original and rightful caretakers of this land, is studied, preserved, and celebrated. We are committed to understanding and honoring the sovereignty that has been denied to nearly six hundred indigenous nations, including eleven federally recognized tribes in Minnesota through the breaking of over four hundred treaties, and we are committed to the truth of the history of our indigenous relatives, the success of our indigenous students, and to the healing we hope to create through this commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda, summary of community input received for action items. Director Goggins.
Great. The board has received input from a number of families regarding safety in light of the incident that occurred at the high school last week. I would like to note that there will be a presentation by the district's safety and security team related to safety yet this calendar year that should be very informative and valuable for community members as well as the board to hear more about our general practices and how we are putting as our number one priority, keeping our students safe.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Goggins. Okay, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, consent agenda has been passed, and Mike has volunteered to read a wonderful, lengthy list, but a list of gifts to our community.
As everyone knows, we always share the gifts the district has received, either generally or for specific purposes at each meeting. And I'm assuming related to the recent beginning of the school year, a number of individuals and groups have donated something.
Yeah, that's great.
So, with an anonymous monetary gift for pre-K classroom supplies in Appletou-Tech Education Center. We had a gift of funds for students' needs at Falcon Heights Elementary School by the Charities Aid Foundation America. The NPO Connect Your Cause organization on behalf, excuse me, on behalf of Sarah Richter gave a monetary gift to be used at principal's discretion for Falcon Heights Elementary School, and the same organization on behalf of Sarah Richter gave a second monetary gift to be used at principal's discretion for Little Canada Elementary School. The Mauser Chiropractic LLC, Streetless Window Cleaning Business, the EMC Services Business, the Roseville Pizza Company doing business at Parkway Pizza, and the Big Operation LLC doing businesses at Games by the Park, and Northwest Carpet Cleaners, Inc., and Falcon Heights Lauderdale Lions Club have all, each of those, given separate individual monetary donations for the wrestling program at the wrestling program at Roseville High School. The B-Dale Club and Albert Schaefer and Evangeline Nelson as a couple have each given monetary gifts for the football program at Roseville High School. Natasha Sandananyaki gave a monetary gift to the high school for weight room fundraiser, as well as Catherine Ernst gave a monetary gift for the weight room fundraiser at the high school. All of these next are for the volleyball program. Tara and Douglas Holm gave a monetary gift. Burl and Loretta Gangenbach gave a monetary gift. Susan Schultz gave a monetary gift. Elizabeth Schultz Smith and Timothy Smith gave a monetary gift, and Nancy May gave a monetary gift, again, all for the volleyball program at the high school. The Roz Bullpen Baseball Booster Club gave a monetary gift to buy baseballs at the Roseville Area High School. There's a number of gifts for the food shelf. Anthony Scott gave a monetary gift. Heaven and Jennifer Bell gave a monetary gift. Amish Elise Amon gave a monetary gift. Harley Christensen a monetary gift. William Yeh a monetary gift. Sarah Coleman a monetary gift. Benjamin Rust a monetary gift. Timothy Heisel a monetary gift. Katie Winker a monetary gift. And Heidi Munson a monetary gift, again, all for the food shelf at the high school. The Roz Girls Soccer Booster Club gave a monetary gift for transportation for the girls soccer program at the high school. Carolyn Jennings gave a monetary gift for FACS and orchestra departments at the high school. And then the rest of the donors also gave to the FACS department at the high school monetary gifts. Daisy Otis a monetary gift. Gretchen Birbaba monetary gift. Ugly Harnesson a monetary gift. Terry Dixon monetary gift. Don Keenan a monetary gift. Tricia Damgoff monetary gift. Kimberly Wood monetary gift. Sheng Wei a monetary gift. Robert Kong a monetary gift. And Sarah Coleman monetary gift, again, all for the FACS department at the high school. So, there you go. Again, just astounded by the number of folks and organizations who care enough about our kids to donate, in this case largely monetary gifts, which is very appreciated.
That's great.
It's hard to realize how welcome that is and how well-used people be, so thank you.
I'll note too that FACS stands for Family and Consumer Science, so oftentimes those donations are directed towards food supplies for the student projects, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for reading that list. Generous community we have. All right, moving on to reports and non-action items. The Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center update, Superintendent Jenny Lake.
Yeah, thank you. I thought we would explain to our community and our board a little more about what our partnership with the MAPS Center is. So we'll start with some definitions, and thanks for naming that off the top, Acting Chair Anderson. I'll do some co-reading, and then just please go ahead and ask questions as we move through today's presentation. So as you said, Midwest and Plains Assistance Center is a project of the Great Lakes Equity Center and Educational Research and Service Center located in Indiana University School of Education at Indiana University Purdue University Indianapolis. And I think I'm the only team member looking tired, but we arrived home after nine o'clock or so last night, so we're fresh off of a two-day training, thus the reason why we had to move the board meeting from a Tuesday to a Thursday this week. So next slide, you can see the Midwest region identified with the MAPS Center, and the past two days, we'd been working with teams from Wisconsin, Michigan, and Indiana, and we were the only school district from Minnesota participating. In terms of what is the MAPS, it's federally funded by the U.S. Department of Education under Title IV of the Civil Rights Act, and the Center provides equity-focused technical assistance to states, districts, and public schools focused on systemic improvements to ensure educational access, participation, and positive outcomes. And you can already see the alignment to the work in Roseville area schools in terms of the philosophy of both organizations. To outline that even more, we grabbed the mission statements. Of course, we're very proud of our new mission statement in Roseville area schools, excellence, innovation, and equity in all we do, and thus, I had just seen this last time, the MAPS Center's mission of equitable, responsive education for all. So again, just noting the alignment in our foundation. Our partnership is a Tier III systemic equity partnership the boards had seen in the past and approved formally last spring, an MOU with the Equity Center, and the Equity Leadership Team participates in collaborative consultation calls, partnership academies, and completes evaluation activities. We began this partnership about January of this past year. It's a combination of virtual and in-person sessions. Next winter will be all virtual, and we only have one last one-day meeting in Indianapolis next August. And again, this is a partnership funded by the federal government, not at a cost to the district. Here you can see the specific timeline in terms of our consultation, their monthly check-ins, and again, this is really directly connected with the district's strategic plan, and we see the MAPS Center as an accountability partner in ensuring that we are implementing our work plan connected to our strategic plan as we set forth. So you can see how we transitioned from year one to year two, and then finally, an exit. Let's look a little bit more about our purpose. We go to the Center in examining our organization's equity efforts. We discuss practices for analyzing the extent to which equitable practices are currently in place in the organization's system to inform their strategic action. So this was very, very timely in Roseville area schools. And also, we support exploring strategies for leveraging internal assets to facilitate and sustain equity efforts. We spent a lot of time over the last two days. Again, I think my intellectual capacity was stretched in terms of writing hypothesis statements and looking at data and pulling out our action steps and our strategic plan and aligning it with work, all combined with an equity training platform, so it was a very intense two days. Here's our district goals, again, just to share with the community, just our goals and key strategies, and again, you can see the language is very persons-forward and equity-driven. Finally, I was very pleased with the self-assessment survey. This was a product gained. We gave the survey to, well, I'll go to the next slide. Go ahead to the next slide. We gave the survey to all staff, and we had five hundred and seventy-eight respondents, primarily licensed staff, five hundred and eleven, so the vast, vast majority of our staff were licensed who completed the survey. Seventeen percent of our BIPOC staff, eighty-three percent, of course, of our white staff, seventy-four percent female, and which really is a reflection of our overall staff. Examples of categories include governance and policy, structures and processes, continuous improvement, and recruitment and retention. And again, you can see how this absolutely aligns to our strategic plan in Roseville schools, so we just got our results on Tuesday, and so that's a key next step for us, to analyze the results and bring those back to the board. And I'd actually like to share a copy of the survey with the board after we have just a little bit more time to look through it, but I think everyone would be very interested. And then even as an activity, the board could take that assessment too in terms of, let's monitor and see where we're at, look at our results, and then let's potentially take that survey a year from now, or even six months from now, and see if there's movement, and our staff will do the same. Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, next steps, so we will analyze our results. Growth of our critical consciousness journey, we talked a lot over the past two days about critical consciousness and how that has to move us forward, being self-reflective as leaders in the district. And I've already mentioned, the MAPS Center is an accountability partner for us, and we look forward to continued partnership, learning, and growth. And before I maybe open it up for questions or comments, does any of my colleagues like to share anything from the past two days, your reflections?
I can jump in. One of the things that I think was interesting was there, like, the mental model that they applied to language, and they have this premise around, like, it's people-first language, and the languages that we use are kind of windows into our beliefs and our values and our mental models, so it was just a different framework to apply to language that we use in the strategic plan. And then the other piece that I appreciated was, we had, we were partnered with Critical Friends, and so we were looking at somebody else's work that we didn't have insight in, and so we were asking things like acronyms, or what does this word mean? And so then it, like, helped us kind of apply that same framework to our work of, when you're immersed in the work on a day-to-day basis, we can have some shared understanding, and if somebody from the community was looking at the work, how do we make sure that we phrase it in a way that is making meaning for others who are looking at it too? So those were two interesting points for me.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions about the work or work moving forward?
Would you share with our community especially how the district was selected to participate in this, because, I mean, being one district from Minnesota, obviously there was a process involved.
I was asked that earlier today. I think the initial connection was, I was asked to serve on a couple of different boards in related to equity-driven relationship, leadership, and I had a relationship with someone from the organization, and I was impressed with their leadership and what they had to say, and I think they were really impressed with our Equity Foundation, Roseville Area Schools as well. So then they asked us to apply, and we interviewed and completed an application, and we were chosen for the partnership.
Well, it's very exciting, because it's obviously a significant amount of kind of consultation expertise provided to our district.
Yes, we're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Is there any insight you've had to date that would say, that would help you look at some, our plan or implementation, how we're planning to implement, that would say we need to look at something differently, or is that a little premature yet?
Maybe a bit premature. I think the last two days of activities were around hypothesizing problem-solving and what to anticipate, and the Center really encouraging us to prioritize our steps in which we have in terms of identifying year one, but even prioritizing within year one to maybe three big goals that we can be more specific and really hold each other accountable, because knowing our work plan has about four hundred and seventy lines of tasks, that if we could pull out fifteen as priority areas and even become more public in that work, that would help our accountability.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll keep the board updated, so thank you.
Mr. Director and Chair, a question order?
Another question. The, we need to go into a closed session this evening, and my understanding is that for the closed session, everyone except the board and the superintendent, and I believe the assistant superintendent, will need to leave the room physically.
District Cabinet can remain in the room.
Yes, we have to go in.
Yes.
And it also appears there's only one action item that's not related to the topic of the closed session. I'm wondering is, could we, could I move to amend the agenda such that we would do the first action item, the resolution condemning antisemitism, and cover that action item first, then do the closed session, and then come back with the other actions? That would allow folks who are here, who are on TV, that when they have to exit and we go to a closed session, they may choose to come back, they're welcome to come back, but then they might not have to, because we've already had covered the only action item that isn't dealing with the closed session topic, so.
If you make that as a motion?
I'd like to make that a motion, directly the first action item, then after that, do the closed session.
Action item eight A.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion on that? I think it's a great suggestion, Director Bogushevsky. Okay, I will take a vote on that to not go into our closed session, but we will be taking up item action eight A only. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, we will be moving into eight A, resolution condemning antisemitism. And I'd like to just make a brief statement first. I think a lot of people, a lot of folks in this community realize over the past several weeks, some antisemitic comments that have been made in this community, and I'll just be frank, comments that don't fit, I think, our community. I know they certainly don't fit our equity vision, and so we're taking action tonight. This board, this district is taking action. I think I'll leave it at that, but turn it over to Superintendent Lake.
No, I'll actually.
Initial, or, okay.
No, we'll, I think, move right to the reading.
Yep, right, yep, and Acting Clerk Chu has something for us to read, please.
So what I'm reading is the resolution condemning antisemitism. Whereas antisemitism, according to the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance and the United States Department of State, is a, quote, "is a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Rhetoric and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property toward Jewish community, institutions, and religious facilities. And whereas antisemitism in various forms has existed for centuries, and whereas, according to the Anti-Defamation League, antisemitic attitudes in the United States are at the highest level in decades, and national data from 2022 show the number of antisemitic incidents reached a record high. And whereas, reports of antisemitic harassment and vandalism in Minnesota triple from 2020 to 2022. And whereas, all children in the United States are entitled to equal access to a public elementary and secondary education regardless of their or their parents' actual or perceived national origin or religious beliefs. And whereas, Roseville area schools believes that it is the best interest of our community to prevent any antisemitic acts that disrupt the educational experience and create harm for students, staff, and families. And whereas, Roseville area schools believes our collective ability to protect each other and work toward a future without prejudice or hate is strongest when we respect and value the contribution of each and every student, staff, family, and community member. And whereas, Roseville area schools is committed to teaching our students about Holocaust and genocide using fact-based information that is inclusive of historically underrepresented voices and is reflective of our district's broader commitment to actively countering the spread of prejudice and hate. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number Six Twenty-Three, Roseville Area Schools condemns any antisemitic statements or actions targeting our students, staff, families, and community. Be it further resolved that Roseville Area Schools embraces its responsibility to welcome and educate all students, will uphold the district equity vision to provide an equitable and respectful educational experience for every student, family, and staff member, is committed to the safety and emotional well-being of all students within its control, and is committed to ensuring that all spaces are welcoming and safe places for students, staff, and their families."
Thank you very, very much. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the resolution before us? Anyone want to say anything?
Very proud to support.
Yep. Right. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much for reading it.
Thank you.
Okay, that does bring us to that point in the agenda where we'll be going into a closed session to consider educational data and potential student expulsions. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D Point Oh Five, Subdivision Two, A Three, and Section 121A Point Four Seven, Subdivision Five, I move to go into a closed session in order to consider educational data and the potential expulsion of two students.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. We will be moving into our closed session. Okay, I would like to reopen our regular session of October twelfth. We will be moving to action items. The first action item on the agenda is a resolution expelling student number one. I will entertain a motion.
I move adopt, that the board adopt the resolution expelling student one.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those signify by saying aye.
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 All those against, nay. Resolution is adopted. We will now move on to the second resolution, resolution expelling student number two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Director, I move that we adopt the resolution as presented, expelling student two.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is adopted.
Thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you. Superintendent Lake, thank you. All right. We will be moving on to board reports. Mike, would you like to?
Certainly, I just have one thing, and, you know, hopefully, some folks might be out there still watching. I did have the pleasure of attending the Roseville Area Schools Foundation annual event this year, held at the Cedar Home Golf Center right off of Hamlin Avenue, just south of the high school, and this time it was an afternoon event, happy hour, but with a focus really on appetizers and speakers, so it wasn't just a bunch of people getting together to have cocktails. There was a bar, but it was really a great event. Dr. Lake spoke wonderfully about the work that the foundation supports with our schools. We had several staff talk who had been beneficiaries of grants from the program, and it was just a really fun evening, and so, you know, I intend to keep going to those year after year. I've gone to them in the past, they're really nice, and if you did not have a chance to go this year, kind of keep an eye out for it next year. It's always in the fall around this same time, and it's a wonderful way to support the schools and support the foundation who supports the schools, so, that, thank you.
Kitty, would you like to go next?
Sure, I had an opportunity to attend our Equity Leadership Advisory Council along with Dr. Chu. There was a quote that I thought, it just kind of stuck with me, so I was going to say it's a quote from Delon Smith, "Everything we do can be a teaching moment, and to look at everything we do and what it says to our students and community," and I thought that was a very good thing to keep in mind as we do our work. We reviewed the NI Plan as, and the changes that were made based on input from MDE and their review of the plan. We also spent a fair amount of time talking about the student self-assessment and how that works to really engage students in and prepare them so they know what to expect, and how do you deal with that all? and how do you deal with that also at the high school where you don't have a single teacher or the middle school? So, there's some discussion around that.
All right. Thank you. Maddox?
I got to attend the Northeast Metro 916 School Board Retreat, got to bond with some of my colleagues there. In addition, the same night of the foundation, there also was a seek, the Special Education Advisory Council meeting that was very well-attended, had some people from last year, but some new faces as well. I had to leave early to go back to the foundation, but I think it went well, and excited we're off to a good start.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking at my calendar, it was a busy week. So, I was, so let me see what has not been covered. I had a chance to attend a local government meeting that Wednesday morning. We just have staff that gave such an amazing report on Adult Basic Ed and the Alternative School FARS. So, it was great discussion, and it's also wonderful to find out that, you know, we have, we have some of us who have our parents who say went through the Adult Basic Ed program. So, that was just, it was just great, yeah, and the understanding what those programs mean for our students, the environment, smaller environment, and yet we wanted to understand this, and so it was just great. It was just wonderful presentation. I also had a chance to attend the Minnesota Thursday Lunch. It was lunch hour, I'm so close to that school, I have to go and stop and met the Ranger? Ranger?
Rancher.
Rancher, oh, thank you, Rancher, and then the woman who started the, oh, my goodness, I'm going to forget their names here.
The Food Co-op.
The Food Co-op, yeah, yeah. It was great. It was great just to be among students, knowing the food was really, you know, in Minnesota, and the fact that there was a lot of good recycling going on, I was very happy to see that, organic recycling and all that, so it was, it was great. It was great to be there. And then I was also at the fundraiser, lovely, lovely event. Oh, the final thing I was on, I don't know who else was on, if any one of you are on. I was at the AMSD Board Meeting that morning, Friday morning, and there was a present, there was a student panel and talked about what makes, like, the experience really good, and so that was really well-done. And then there was a report by the licensing, licensing agency, talking about all the changes in the tier licensure system, so that was, that was a great presentation too. And then I would say, one thing that was really stuck with me, the executive director, Scott, he was presenting a fact sheet that he put together to talk about how there is some talk about how, oh, there's so much money that has been given to education over the years, okay? And he literally was so good at putting that together to say, yes, that's a fact, there's a lot of money that has been invested over the years, but yet, if you think about it, some of the money is not for operations. And so, so he actually had that fact sheet that really laid it out, and in fact, even with the historic investment, he has a chart to show our gap between what should be funded and what is actually funded. It's actually a bigger gap now, because inflation is higher than the four percent that we got. So, that was very interesting in terms of really understanding that school finance is very complicated, and the fact it is easy to kind of like have sweeping statement that say, you guys got all this money all this year, what's going on? And so, there's still a lot of work to do to make sure that we are fully funded, so I really appreciate that, yeah.
You're right. He could lead a seminar.
Oh, absolutely.
Anybody, somebody comes up to you, like, any of us, neighbor, friend, whatever, and you received this historic investment.
Yeah.
You know, it's not doing what you think it's doing.
That's right.
Counter-inflation.
Certainly, the cabinet has that information, Sherry Kenyatta and others, but I will share that fact sheet with the board, so you also have that information.
Yeah, it's a really good one, actually. Yeah, it's really good.
Thanks, Rose. Okay, just something briefly, I had an opportunity this past week to attend the Falcon Heights Parent Teacher Association meeting, and a couple highlights, they're hard at work. Falcon Heights PTA has an open house coming up on November 16th, I believe that's a Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. for the community to, you know, come and join, you know, meet some of the teachers and activities and programs, so they're busy planning that. And a future event, they're already starting to gear up and start to work on the Read-A-Thon they have in February. I know several schools have Read-A-Thons, you know, in February, January, February, March, but they're already starting to work hard at that, so it was great to see, and it was great, it was very well-attended, a packed room, so it was fun to be there. All right, that moves us to Superintendent Jenny Lake's report.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd like to start by thanking, again, the Roseville Area Schools Foundation for their tremendous support and partnership. With the generous support of the foundation, our fifth and sixth grade students in Roseville area schools are currently enjoying the full implementation of our college and career prep program, AVID, or Individual Advancement via Individual Determination. A special thank you to the foundation's Board of Directors who are tireless in their efforts and commitment in lifting up our school community. I'd also like to highlight that this past Monday, October 9th, was Indigenous Peoples' Day. We're very proud to rightly teach accurate histories of our indigenous communities and hold up their strength in high regard each and every day. Finally, congratulations to Edgerton, Emmett D. Williams, and Falcon Heights Elementary Schools for beating the odds, as outlined in last week's Star Tribune article and data. These students are achieving above-state averages on their math and reading assessments. Congratulations to our students, and thank you to our outstanding educators in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to remind my colleagues that we do have a very short, but I hope to be short, study session this evening. There is no reason for staff to stay for that, that's our own discussion, but I do want to say thank you to staff for all the hard work, the topics that we had to cover today, the action we had to do today. I thank everyone involved, all the professionalism. I certainly hope it's something we don't have to do again, but as Melissa said, there are no guarantees at all in the society we live in, but thank you to everybody involved in your hard work. If there's no other further business, we stand adjourned.